Thank you for all coming out on this Wednesday evening on a very warm, pleasant, pleasant day overall. This is the public meeting, the last public meeting we're going to be having for the Kane County apportionment plan that will cover the 2021 map and it'll continue until, for 10 years, till 2031. So every 10 years, as you may know, the census takes place and we are required by federal law to do the reapportionment. This year was just like every other 10 years where we actually start doing the draft maps and we are almost done. It has taken us quite a bit of time to be able to get the input from all 24 of our board members, to be able to go out to the community and we had town halls before we even presented the draft of the original map that we presented, to get the input from communities to find out what exactly they wanted for their map and what kind of representation they had. People were sometimes confused by this, but what I wanted to do is to secure that information as a basis for drawing the map, which is eventually what we were able to do. Then also we talked to each one of our 24 board members, sometimes several times, sometimes over a period of weeks and months, to be able to get their input. We pushed it out online, shared it with community. Once again, we got additional supports, comments from community members who just voluntarily had the courtesy to talk to us about the map and what they felt about it. And once again, that was reviewed and if appropriate incorporated into the design. We had probably over 150, 160 inputs, maybe 170 inputs on designing this map and drawing this map. So this map was not what we would call the closed door, where no one got a chance to see it. It was open, it was transparent. We asked for opinions, we got dialogue back and forth and we respected and received that dialogue. It was sent by a team. Zach Kowalski, who you see online, was a part of that. He's going to be talking to us in a little bit and Roger Fonsdok over there and his team helped, actually helped draft the maps. We had two members of our State's Attorney's Council who actually helped us as well with the legal part and the ramifications of making sure that everything we did on the map was completely legal. And we had a demographer who also helped ensure that we had appropriate voting rights districts and that we followed the letter of the law. Now, let me tell you a little bit about the voting rights districts. Previously, there were six voting rights districts. You had originally a district, 26 county board members. The board decided to reduce it in 2010, 2010 to 24. Voting rights districts were drawn. Now, what's a voting rights district? Voting rights district has a major minority population. So whatever is the largest minority population in that area requires us to have a minority district. Previously, there were six of them, which made up about a quarter of the population, quarter of the map. Now, because of the, what we discovered is there has been an increase in growth in Hispanic population. So accordingly, the voting rights districts were also increased and now we have eight of them. There are five in Aurora, there are two in Elgin, and there's one up in Carpentersville. Those are our voting rights districts. Voting rights district has 63% Hispanic population who's of voting age. No, 63% Hispanic population, 59% of that population is of voting age. So you can see as we start drawing out the map and starting to use data, we have to start grabbing blocks, sections of a community, sections of a neighborhood to incorporate what we consider the best data that we have to ensure that we have these voting rights districts. We also, at the very beginning, agreed because the census data was very late this year. It was supposed to come out in the spring, it did not come out until mid-August. The board allowed us to use the American Community Survey data, which traditionally was very close to what the census data, so that we could get a closely drawn draft map that we felt really aligned with the population. But then the census came out, only to discover that the city of Aurora lost 9% of its population. That was a significant drop in population. That meant that all those voting rights districts that we already had developed in the city of Aurora, in Aurora Township, had to be shifted. With the, with the drop in population, the district geography, in geographic terms, had to get larger. And since, well, I don't know if, you can see where you're sitting. It's at the bottom southeast quadrant. We couldn't go further east because we were on county line, we couldn't go further south because we're in county line. So there's only two ways to draw it out, is to go north and to go west. And with that, everything else started tumbling and changing again. So we had to once again, almost redraw the entire map. And then everyone had input back again. So eventually, with help of the task force, we had a task force that was made up of board members as well as community members, receiving their input, getting the input again from board members of what they feel their needs are and what their community needs are, that they're representing their district needs. I presented this map, and that was presented on November 8th. This is the map that I, is the legal map that I presented to the board. Once I did that, the board has an opportunity to once again adjust it, as well as does the community. So this map was put online on 11/12. There was another adjustment, primarily in District 16, District 17, 22, and 14. That was done on a Friday, pushed that out. I got feedback from the members of the task force. They wanted some additional adjustments. We met Monday morning, 10 o'clock in the morning this week. This is the latest version of the map. And once again, there were slight changes now to 16 and 12. And 2022 was here. I think that's it.
14.
14. Little adjustments to 14. You're absolutely right, little adjustments to 14 here. So these three were adjusted, once again. So this is the final map pending your input, and that's the community-based input. We'll take that as an aggregate. Roger will define it, we'll take a look at population, and if appropriate, and if we can, we will certainly adjust the map. Now, each of the population, we took the population of the county, which we thought originally was like 530-plus thousand people. Now we're looking at about 516,000. So it only grew by 1,000, even though we had expected major growth. And there was major growth up north, huge major growth. But having lost the population in Aurora, as I mentioned, caused it to go north and west. So population is 21,500-ish is our average. We want to stay within 2% of that, so we can go down 2%, we can go up 2%. So you'll see this variation in numbers as we're gathering population. We didn't want to go any further than that because we thought that that's, it's a conservative, it's an appropriate response. And Zach will tell you exactly why we had to make that choice, and it is a fair choice. It'll allow for additional growth opportunities, and I'm not going to be surprised in another 10 years, when we saw this district previously go up to 30,000 people. That may happen again, and this district, once again, in this area here, may get adjusted. And when Aurora, if they choose to do a new census, review the census data, which will happen in '23, the actual numbers of these districts may get larger, but the map will not change again until the official census is done once again in 10 years. So once it's agreed upon, this is the map that we're going to be living with. So why is it important? Because this is where your county board members are. This is who's going to represent you and your communities where you live here in Kane County. Here's going to affect your input about your roads, future water needs, healthcare issues as well, transportation. All of this is going to impact who you vote for and what this looks like going forward in the future, and what your zoning requirements are going to be. So with that, I'll turn it over to Zach, and he can talk a little bit about, a little bit more about voting rights districts and population data.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. I've had the pleasure for the past about six months, working with my colleague Josina Marita, in partnership with Madam Chair and county staff and members of the task force, to really figure out how we were going to undertake this kind of significant redraw of a county that initially we thought had grown fairly substantially, but then, you know, not too long ago, we found out had actually pretty stayed growth, but had a different demographic composition than they had previously, most notably with the Voting Rights Act. So in both situations, when we were using the American Community Survey data, and then when we actually were able to get allowance to go beyond the statutory deadline and wait for the actual census data to come out earlier this fall, we started always with the Voting Rights Act considerations. And the main reason for that is that would, if not, in not doing so, one would deprive those communities of interest, of dual representation, of an ability to elect a member of their choosing from their community. So morally, it was the right thing to do, but also legally, we would be required and open to a challenge in court for not taking that into consideration. So we always started in both sets of data, and really within any variation that you'll see tonight, of the draw with the Voting Rights Act districts done first. And for the purpose of Kane County, that always was really in consideration for the Latino community, their federal precedent really requires you that when and where you can to draw a district of population, not necessarily voters, but just of every man, woman, and child, of 65% or more, you do so as, you know, allowed with the size of districts here. So the composition of the individual districts allowed for us to create eight of those. You may hear numbers then with regards to the voting rights, or I'm sorry, voting age population VAP, which is a subset within those districts of eligible but not necessarily registered voters. And so that would just be basically anyone that is a citizen, 18 and above, that if they wanted to, they could register to vote and then therefore exercise their ability in selecting the representative for them on the county board. We had to also maintain certain percentages within those districts. So some districts you'll see are actually a little bit more than 65% in total population, and then others are lower on the voting age population, but there's still a majority in each of those. And that was a very specific consideration that we had. And so, again, that was primarily in the Aurora and then in the northeast Elgin and Carpentersville areas. There were some other districts that were drawn that also have a significant minority population influence districts, certainly for the Black and Asian communities, but state law doesn't allow for us to really take into consideration like we would for state and federal districts, what would be called a coalition district. So for the purpose of the county map, we really only had to look at Latino, Black, and if need be, Asian, you know, composition of singular districts. And so that's what we did, that's how we got to the eight districts that we now have. And then every other district after that was taking into consideration, again, population requirements, but also some of the phenomenal input that we got in our public hearing, which was, let's try and not cut, oh, there we are, sorry, let's try and not cut municipalities where possible, let's try and not, you know, let's try and respect township lines. There's geographic lines that have always kind of been a core component of any district. And so that could, you know, be the Fox River, that could be Randall Road, you know, major, major roadways. We tried to take those into consideration as well, so that you had communities that had similarities being kept together on that. One of the big things that we heard was rural representation, and so I think in the western part of the county, you certainly see that reflected here. And again, others were, well, hey, let's, you know, if possible, through population, not split a small to mid-size community, if need be, let's keep them all together. And so I think we did that. One thing that we didn't do, and I know Roger will probably go over this, was do that in oftentimes consideration with regards to precincts. And that was because we don't draw maps by precincts, you draw it by population, and there's some of your precincts that are significantly larger than others, and others that are, you know, are going to need to probably merge with their neighboring precincts to now meet that new 1,200-person allowance that state law has given that. So for those of you that may be looking at like, well, you know, my precinct may be split, there's quite a few precincts that will be split in this, but precincts themselves can be redrawn, election cycle to election cycle, year to year. There's a new state law that actually impacts the construction and development of precincts going forward. So that will be dealt with after the map itself is passed. And really with that, I think we, you know, have enjoyed our time, you know, certainly getting to meet so many members of the public and the task force and of the board. And ultimately, we feel that this is a map that is both legally defensible, meets the requirements of the diversity considerations within your community, and really does provide an opportunity for diverse and unique communities and constituencies throughout the district to be able to elect a member that will carry their interests and know their communities going forward.
Thank you, Zach. So if you heard, and I'll repeat it, and I know we have some precinct committee people here, we will not be changing the precincts for this upcoming election cycle. They're going to remain intact. That's not saying that they're not going to be changed in the very near future, but for this gubernatorial election, they're going to remain exactly the same. So you may have some split precincts between your districts because of the map redraw, but going forward, it'll be changed. There's going to be a great deal of work required to change 229 precincts. The amount of work that went in to change 24 districts amplify that. So it's going to be different, now that we can have 1,200, things are going to be shifting around once again, but not for the next election cycle. So I just want to make everybody aware of that. If you're already familiar with your precinct captain, if you manage a precinct, everything is going to remain exactly the same as it had been previously, with no changes at all. So with that, I'd like to turn it over now to Roger Fonsdok, and he's going to show you a little history of all that we've been working on since April.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chairman Pirog. Just like to thank the board members and the task force initially for all of their work, and those that are here tonight and present, and then also the people that came out for public comment. So we're going to try and walk through the slide presentation that we've been using. For reference, all of these slides are posted under the reapportionment task force part of our webpage. It's under the agendas out there, so if you want a copy of this to look at. There's also maps on the main county page that you can look at, and there's an interactive map that you can use to drive into details on the map. So tonight's presentation is about the 2021 redistricting process and the presentation of the 24 single-member district map that Madam Chairman Karim Pirog presented. It was a map drafted on November 8th, and then we, I believe the county board date was November 9th, the following day we presented it to the board. Again, some of the people, Madam Chairman, already thanked, but I would like to recognize just the folks from the State's Attorney's Office, Michelle Nierman and her staff from the Civil Division, they've been working with us quite a bit and answering our calls and helping us out. We also had Special Assistant Phil Lutghahan, who helped us from the State's Attorney's Office. And finally, from my office, Tom Nikowski and Nick Kruger, who worked with GIS. And not to forget the county board staff, Karen Hames and Jane, so thank you. First thing that started this whole process was in April 22nd, 2021. We had a meeting where the State's Attorney, Jamie Mossar, came in with her staff and they presented basically the entire process and legal requirements, statutory and ordinances that we needed to address and deal with as we go through this process. I think that kind of set the stage for what would happen over the next few months and what we needed to comply with and how we needed to do it. We initially started looking at the old maps, as Madam Chair mentioned. The 2000 map, the 2000 census map, which was done in 2001, was based on a population of 404,000. The population in 2010 had grown to 515,000, so the 2011 map, the population had grown by 25%, a little over 25%. So it was a lot of growth. In that time, as we grew, you might notice that we went from 26 to 24 board districts, which is also something that was mentioned, mentioned earlier. So early on, we realized that the census was going to be delayed. We heard from the Census Bureau that we might not get data until August, it usually is out in March. So we were trying to figure out how that's going to affect us in drawing the maps without having the required census data. May 4th, there was a special county board meeting. At that meeting, there was consensus to use the American Community Survey data, which is a rolling survey of population from 2015 to 2019, and there are estimates. So we were looking at what data could we get started with to get an idea, and we're going to talk about the population from the estimates. You may hear me say ACS to represent, I mean, American Community Survey. At that same meeting, it was decided that they would continue with 24 single-member districts, and that was an ordinance passed by the board. So we didn't change the number of board districts, even though that is an option that they can vote on. There's also approval to do the town halls, which we invited the public to come to four town hall meetings. So the next step, we looked at the 2020 population estimates, and these were from just the American Community Survey, the ACS data. And at that time, we were looking at 532,000 people, which is about 16,000 more than what the census actually reported from 2020. Some of the numbers that we were looking at in this particular map is out in the northwest. There's a lot of population growth, and we were trying to understand, you know, how that's going to affect the district sizes, because we knew that the district sizes would be needing to be smaller, so the population has to be shifted substantially. We looked at a lot of other data from 2011 and the processes that were taken in 2011. One of the processes, obviously, looking at population and demographics. We looked at a series of maps that were provided in 2011 from MALDEF, which is Mexican-American Legal Defense and Education Fund, it's a mouthful. But they had heat maps that showed us where the Hispanic population is and how the county board maybe looked at it in 2011, and some of the six districts that we have now that were originally the Hispanic voting rights districts. We continued to look at the northeast, the southeast, where we have a concentration of Hispanic residents, and also we have, we have other, you know, ethnic backgrounds as well, different race and ethnicity. Then we also looked at the northwest, which was where the dense population and population growth was occurring. So those were some of the things we were trying to get our hands around and understand as we go into developing the first maps. This was the district map in 2011, and from that, we made some quick statistical data analysis, and just looking at it, we were looking for what types of voting rights districts do we have, or what's our demographics look like in 2010? And you can see some of these are Hispanic in yellow, Hispanic population percentages, and the density of the Hispanic population. So we had some that were considerably high at 81% and some that were moderate at 45%. And I think some of the, you know, work that we were looking at was, how do you level that to create additional VRA districts and not diminish, you know, any of the opportunity for any of the existing Hispanic districts to have their, their majority population? So that's what we were looking at early on. These are the MALDEF maps. The red is the heat zones of Hispanic, and if you zoom in, you can see quite a bit of detail, but just gives you an idea of what the MALDEF maps look like for the northeast and the southeast. And we do a similar thing with heat maps and try to colorize the population around the county, so we can understand where Hispanic voters are, Asian, Black, African-American. So the information was carried over into ACS data. This is the ACS data showing us kind of the same profile of Hispanic populations, and you'll see that some of the populations grew, some of them remain consistent. We still have that leveling effect that needs to take place, that you can see the population continued to grow, it's a greater percentage, but we still have some really high percentage, 84% districts, and we have some that are, you know, more moderate at 50, 51. So even on the low end of those districts, you could see that they were above 50% even at this point. The bottom three districts that you see on there in red are districts that we thought were over the deviation and overpopulation. Most of those are west and northwest. District nine is the far northwest of the county, where we saw considerable growth up in Rutland Township. So that, obviously, those are areas of interest to us. This is just another version of the same map, looking at a little bit closer, and we're looking at what is going on in the northeast and trying to understand the, the population again, just looking at the different districts. In yellow, in the table grid, they're, they're the Hispanics with, more majority Hispanic population. The red shaded rows of data are the population is way over deviation. So we did the same type of map for the southeast, and we're just looking at the data and the distribution of population, trying to identify in yellow where we know we have Hispanic concentration, Hispanic majority. And then again, the red is the same overpopulation. So as you go through this, this one is just pointing out the overpopulation in the northwest. After we did our initial review of what data we had, we went through a series of town hall meetings. Madam Chairman hosted four, and then we had one extra one, I think we did even, on top of that, so I think we finished with five. Franklin Ramirez was one of the people that helped us with organizing that. But we did those for feedback, just to try and get comments about what we should be looking at. I know some of that's already been mentioned, but, you know, western representation, keeping communities together, municipalities together, those were the types of things that resonated. These are some of the things that were mentioned at that time. There was a lot of conversation about, well, when is the census data coming and when are we going to use the census data, because that's the real data that you are required to use by law. And we were waiting patiently, but still working. We took the ACS data and generated three maps based on the ACS data to give the board members some, something that they could consider and look at based on the types of things we needed to do for distribution of population and the voting rights districts. So again, we're dealing with eight voting rights districts, the five in Aurora, two in Elgin, one in Carpentersville. And then what, what do you do with the population out west? From these, the second version, the version in the middle, was what the board members had, had a stronger preference for. And I think a lot of that was early, you know, we're, we're dealing with ACS data, so it hadn't been refined yet, but we took version two as our initial draft. That was done June 10th. Every time we do this, we extract a series of, a set of data. It tells us the distribution of the population, the voting district, the Hispanic population, all the different race, ethnicity. What we're trying to get is that 63% to 65% What we're trying to get is that 63% to 65% voting rights district for Hispanic. And then, we were looking for 59% for Hispanic voting age population. But every time we do a map, we generate tables like this to try and understand the demographics of it. So, sometime in June, there was a Senate bill that came forward that was dealing with the schedule, obviously, without the census data. And the requirement to use census data, you can't draw the map according to the law. So, there were some legal changes that needed to be made. That initial bill was signed in June, and they changed the deadline for the presentation of the map into November. And then subsequently, changed the deadline for reapportionment to December 31st. I think it was yesterday or in the last few days, there's been additional legislation. Madam Chair, you'd mentioned it actually confirmed the December 31st deadline. And then, they also dealt with some precinct size issues, which Zach Kowalski mentioned. We also got a new date for the primary. It moved out to June 28th. So, the reapportionment schedule, this was something that State's Attorney's Office worked on with our team. And we were looking at a period of late October to early November to adopt the reapportionment plan. We're working on that right now through the public hearing process to get the adoption hopefully later this month. I think the date, is it November 30th? We're working towards that date right now. So, we came from draft two of the ACS to draft 2.3. And this was the last draft that we did with ACS data. We were understanding better the commitment from the Census Bureau that we were going to get the actual census data. So, we drew this map as an example, and we took a deep breath and paused looking at when we were going to get census data and then also kind of digesting some of the feedback that we were getting based on these ACS maps. Along comes August 12th. We received the actual census data, GIS and the team from the demographers. We take all of that, bring it in and look at it. And we noticed, you know, obviously, I think the biggest factor was the change in population. It was only 1,253 people. The county only grew by 0.24%. I know there's different discussions and disputes about how much the county grew or didn't grow. But we're basically at a position where you have to use the census data, which was provided. So, you take that, and the new district size becomes, the average size is 21,522 voters or population, I'm sorry. So, that's kind of our guidebook from the census, the size of the district that we need. Looking at the Northeast, Southeast, we immediately took that census data and determined we want to draw the VRA districts first to preserve the VRA districts with a goal of maintaining the eight VRA districts, five in Aurora, two in Elgin, one in Carpentersville. So, this is the Southeast, which is Aurora. And this was from our demographer drawing the first VRA districts for Aurora. September 8th, we started that process. And this was early in the process. There's many subsequent changes. But just to let you know, we did start with the VRA districts in those densely populated areas first. We went to Elgin, did the same process, drew the VRA districts in Elgin and Carpentersville. And then, that's the eighth and ninth. And by the 16th, we had a full map of the county, Elgin, Aurora, Carpentersville, VRA districts and all the townships and areas to the West. So, this was the first full map using census data. It was about a month after we got the census data, we had a first map. Subsequent to that, we started getting feedback again. And we received a lot of different feedback. It came in the form of email, texts, messages, written scribble. This was some of the hand-drawn districts that we received. I just thought they were colorful and they kind of show you what people were thinking. We received some of these for Aurora VRA. We were trying to incorporate their ideas. So, we would take sketches like that and draw them into maps like this. And we would bring them into GIS. And we would run the statistics and data sets to try and figure out if it was reasonable or how reasonable it is and how far we are off a deviation or how far we're off of the Hispanic voting age population. So, October 7th, we get into rendering drawings, kind of subsequent sequence of drawings over and over, where we're taking feedback from the task force and board members, meeting with different people, trying to get the map more refined. We start again on October 27th. We generated another map. There's notation at the bottom of some of these, where you'll see the, you know, 1026, 1026 with edits to 13. And then, we roll forward into November. This is where we really started kind of the downhill approach to the final map. We started getting consensus, final changes. You'll see a bunch of district changes in the bottom of this 1029 map. Those are district changes, a lot of them, 100, 200 people in a precinct moving around, people wanting to adjust certain street lines, center lines, things like that. November 2nd, we revised again, more, more numbers, more district changes. Again, minor changes. We did meet with the Aurora Caucus, the Aurora Board members, to try and refine the Aurora districts to get those within their expectations. So, we met with them, with Madam Chair and some of the task force individually. That's actually been one of the interesting challenges is Open Meetings Act, trying to meet with a couple of board members, one or two at a time. So, you can't meet with all of them at one time. Again, you know, we refine it. We get to November 5th. We're getting really close. It's starting to come together. We make another edit. And on November 9th, at the County Board meeting, Madam Chair Karine Pierog presents the November 8 map on November 9th as her map of the 24 single-member districts. So, that was the map that was presented, and that's the map presented for public comment. We did have a population summary report. Again, this is all online if you want to see it. You'll notice out here in the right column is the Hispanic voting age population. We've made, you know, some minor adjustments since this slide was created. We're trying to get these numbers at 59%. That's our watermark. Actually, if you look at that, the other column that's important is this total population. And we're trying to stay above 21,000 and below 22,000 at all times. So, we don't have any over 22,000, and we're trying to stick as close as we can to 21,000. The Hispanic voting rights districts, I think we were very successful, you know, in keeping the five Hispanic voting rights districts in Aurora, 1, 3, 6, 7 and 8. Elgin, we have 2, 17 and 20. Carpentersville, we have 1, 24. So, those are the voting rights districts that were presented by Madam Chair's map. And they're still consistent, and even in the subsequent revisions that we've been doing. So, since then, we've had the first public hearing on Monday, and we had the public hearing tonight. The comments and things that the folks share with us tonight will all be taken into consideration. And those will be presented back through our team. And then subsequently, those will be considered by Madam Chairman and ultimately, the County Board. So, we, again, we had the November 9th presentation of the map for the public hearings. And then, this is a subtle change in November 12th, just to show you what happens. If you look in the small Elgin area, I can point it out to you if you'd like to see it. But it's a very minor change, couple hundred people in one area and a swap of a precinct in another area. And then, there was a refinement on Monday where we made one more final change. But, so as of Monday, November 15th, this is the current map that we're working off of. So, that concludes the presentation that I had. And I think at this time, Madam Chair, do you want to begin taking public comment? So, for those of you that are here, the public comment, we are on Zoom. So, there are people remote, and it's being live streamed, and it's being recorded. So, I just wanted everybody to be aware of that. We have a few people signed up to speak. Madam Chair, I can give you the list if you want, or do you want me to call them up? Okay. So, we'll get the people that are signed up first. And I believe we have a, is it Lona Steele? Is that correct?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'm kind of short here. Members of the Apportionment Plan Committee and County Board members who might be here. I'm Lona Steele, and I live at 100 North River Lane here in Geneva. I urge the adoption of this new County Board Districts map. Our diverse, hard-working population in Kane County must be recognized and represented. We who live in Kane County are fortunate to have bountiful agricultural acreage, lovely forest preserves and parks, vibrant small communities, and two large, productive metropolitan areas in our county. For demographics for our two metropolitan areas, I've taken my information from the World Population Review of 2021. Aurora, the second-largest city in Illinois and the 132nd-largest city in the U.S., is a vibrant community of almost 200,000 folks. With over one-third of its population Hispanic and a tenth of its population Black and 9% of its population of Asian descent, Aurora deserves to be represented accordingly. Elgin, the seventh-largest city in Illinois and the 282nd-largest city in the U.S., is home to more than 110,000 folks. With almost half of its residents identifying as Hispanic, roughly 6% identifying as Black and another 6% identifying as Asian, Elgin deserves an equitable representation. In both of these cities, the words "majority" and "minority" have sort of been flipped. The historic majority of those identifying as white now actually make up the minority of the population of each of these thriving cities. And the residents who have made up the minority in the past are now actually making up the majority of residents. In these cities, as it is the case in the whole of Kane County, the residents value the growth of community and the growth of all individuals in the community to work for common goals of our democracy. As we know, true representation is the base of our democracy, followed by hard work and justice for all. Again, I urge you to adopt this up-to-date representative County Board Districts map. Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Thank you, Lona. We have Ken Rojek from Big Rock.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and all of the members of the County Board as well. I would echo the adoption of the latest draft of the map as presented as well. I know that I met many of you at the original public hearing in Elburn for the map that is many, many versions ago and expressed a concern that the initial map had continued a problem in which the five Western townships, which represent the majority of the rural and agricultural land as defined in the Kane County 2030 and 2040 Plan, really were not well-represented. The horizontal focus of the districts had the Western edge of most of the districts, the Eastern edge, rather, concentrating most of the population. And as a result, the feeling of most of the Western townships and Western villages, I'm not really just speaking for townships, really didn't feel a strong connection with the county and the County Board. We had, I expressed at that time, a number of the unique issues that were impacting the Western townships. And I won't go into them again. But really was hoping that we could get a little bit more of a voice and better representation by our district representatives. The map that has been presented really does, I think, include all of the five rural townships. Four of them are the Western townships. And then, you could take Plato Township, which is kind of in the middle, really being well-represented by a smaller number of districts, which perversely would increase the voice of these, of our Western townships within the County Board, assuming the county representatives do what we hope and get, and hear our issues and continue to increase their presence in the Western townships. So, I simply want to say thank you for taking, I don't know, you know, how much of an impact my earlier comments had, but it seems like it's well-reflected, and I appreciate the effort. And again, join in urging the County Board to approve the map as presented the draft. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. So, at this time, we don't have any other people that signed up to speak. But if you want to invite anyone else that would like to speak, we can get your name and the community you're from, if there's anybody else that would like to speak.
Is there anybody? First of all, let's reach out. Is there anybody online who would like to speak? No one is, if you would like to speak, please just unmute. Okay, no one? And how about someone in the audience?
Right here.
Yes.
Am I on? There I am. So, Madam Chair, I have, as a task force member, we started this process back in April. And Roger and Zach, I want to thank you for your hard work and its many hours of, you know, mapping the process. The attorneys that were here, I can only tell you that it's, those are some long meetings here in this boardroom. Over a dozen meetings, 160 changes and 19 map revisions. It's a lot of changes. That's a lot of input from a lot of different people. So, since I've been at most of the meetings, I've seen what took place when we made these maps and the process. And I just, I think it's at some point, we have to say, okay, let's pass this map. So, I'm here to support the map, the latest version. And I just want to say good job by all who attended the meetings and staff.
Madam Chair, we have one from the audience. Get your name and your city.
Hi, my name's Michael Linder from St. Charles. The last couple, three weeks, I've started monitoring the committee meetings and the board meetings online. A bit of a frustrating process, by the way. But last week, when Madam Chairman presented the latest map or what was nearly the latest map, there was a lot of kind of grousing about not trusting the census data, that maybe Aurora was undercounted and so forth. Okay, that might be. I don't think so. I think there has been a lot of movement. But that might be. But I learned a long time ago, you don't bring a problem without a solution. And none of these people who are grousing about it had a solution. The law says you use the census. If you don't get it done, the Attorney General is going to come in and make a map for you. And maybe none of us would like that. So, we've done a good job of maintaining the voting rights districts. I think the gentleman over here talking about finally getting some representation for those Western townships is good. I remember years ago, when I lived on the east side of Geneva, and our legislative districts, there were like 200 people in a district that all the rest of it was in DuPage County. And that is frustrating when you're in a district where you have no influence because it applies to all those other people. This is a difficult process, and it's not going to be perfect. But I think the work that's gone into this has been very conscientious. Done, you know, we, Mark just said 19 revisions. I thought there were eight or 10. 19 revisions, come on. You've done a wonderful job, and I do urge approval of it.
One more. We, I think we have two more. Howard, you're going to go next.
Okay, Howard Katz from Batavia. And I just want to say, I've attended some of the town halls at the beginning. I followed the process online. The one thing I'm very impressed with is the transparency in which this whole process was done. I wanted to commend the committee and all the people that Roger had mentioned that was involved with this. This was a process that the public was actually involved with, if not directly indirectly. I think the maps are the best, let's face it, compromise. Everything is going to be a compromise when it comes to working with this many board districts. I would also recommend that the board approve the, this map because it's, it's, it was done in a very open manner and takes into consideration the needs of the county. Thank you.
Hello again, Mark Avalar of Algonquin, Illinois. I want to thank the county, Madam Chair. I want to thank Mr. Fonstock for pointing me to the detailed census block data available on the interactive GIS map on the county's website. Deference to the gentleman here, well, what are our alternatives and what are our alternative solutions to be considered as potential amendments to the final map, which will be voted on at the end of this month? I've taken this, I've given the detailed feedback, both to, to county board members not to exceed Open Meetings Act, Mr. Caius and Mr. Sergeus. I have also recently just sent the details to Mr. Fonstock per the written, but I want to summarize with the use of the online resources that I'm proposing, an amendment to tweaks to four north end county board districts. That we're only talking the population of 337, but in my honest opinion, it will enhance communities of interest. And this change is a summary of three individual changes. It's scalable of the county feels that one cannot be done, the other two could be. I have shared the metrics in detail. The first change is simply, and we mentioned this, to complete the, my hometown, the Village of Algonquin's future land use plan and shift a population of 12 from three census blocks north of Huntley Road in Rutland Township. I won't give the census block numbers here, Mr. Fonstock, as well as Mr. Caius and Mr. Sergeus already have that, but that is a shift of 12 from proposed 21st district to the 23rd district, which is my home district. Communities of influence and communities of interest and influence is something that we have built up in the north end over the past 25 years. I know this firsthand because 25 years ago, people thought Algonquin was only a McHenry County community, but the voters responded and in the past 25 years have increased the influence. And that's also results of why Algonquin residents have represented the 23rd district since 2010. So the process works. That's why we're all here, to enhance voting strength. The second change is the more complex, but it's an understandable one is because there are some southern Dundee Township unincorporated subdivisions that were drawn into county board District 19. And in my honest opinion, we need to see a more Dundee Township centric district for these residents. So this involved including these 400 plus residents and all the census blocks have already been inputted. And that could not be feasible to keep Dundee, all of these residents in District 21. So District 21 needed to give back to District 19, all of the City of Elgin's component of the proposed district north of the tollway. And that actually reduced District 19's proposed population by 212 population residents. So District 19 goes from 21989 to 21777, so balances the numbers better. And it was a net pickup of 212, once the populations added and populations removed from the 21st district. Last but not, certainly not least, a third change, and this touches a portion, but I was very careful not to impact, I believe the impact is no impact to extremely negligible of the Village of Barrington Hills, which is drawn into one of the VRA districts. The communities of interest of the Village of Barrington Hills, I know it's only 125 population, but it's more similar to the Village of Algonquin, which is also has significant population in another county. And with the opening of the Long Meadow Parkway Bridge corridor, I have suggested that the 23rd district picks up that component. Well, that means the 23rd needs to give up something. And I proposed six census blocks in unincorporated Dundee Township north of Huntley Road and south of the Village of Carpentersville to compensate. So the, the final district number for 20, if all three of these changes are adopted, I already mentioned District 19, District 21 would be 21893, District 23, 21974, and District 24, 21813, keeping to the direction of the chair and the committee to ensure that the population stay under 22,000. So with the resources available, I tried to be as meticulous as we can to help make this. As, as you said at the last public hearing on Monday, Madam Chair, this is our map and we want to help you, the leadership and the staff, do the best map possible. So I'm going to ask with these amendments and any other reasonable amendments, that is what is approved finally in an amendment process on November 30th. So thank you for allowing me to just give the highlights. The full details are already been inputted to Mr. Fonstock, as well as Mr. Caius and Mr. Sergeus. Thank you.
There is no one else? Well, thank you. And thank you all for your input and your kind words and your support that has been going on since April. To repeat what Mr. Avalar is, this is truly your map. And I do want to share with you that we've heard stories of how Springfield or how in Washington, the maps are drawn behind closed doors, that the party who may be in control draws a partisan map. This was not the case in Kane County. The doors were wide open. There was never, ever a conversation about how many political influences were available in any of these districts. And I do know that there were conversations between like-minded individuals. There were conversations between fellow board members. That was not to be unexpected, but no way was this ever taken a look as being a partisan map. It is a fair, open map. And it's probably about the fairest map I think we're going to be able to draw. Could we make more revisions? Absolutely. But I think what we've come up with, with the support of the board, with the support of the task force, with the support of the community, is a map that we can all agree to live with for the next 10 years. So I would like to thank you and I'd like to personally thank the board for their support and their input, for the robust dialogue that has happened during these past few months, for the relationships we have all developed with each other as we were drawing this. This is personal for them. It's personal for all of you. It's highly personal for me as well. So again, thank you to the staff for their incredible due diligence, making sure these maps were able to be drawn. And with that, I'd like to close this public meeting. And we will present the final map to you on November 30th, which will be approved of by the board, hopefully. So thank you again. Have a great evening and happy Thanksgiving.